Ready to get?
Yeah.
Matt Corrigan?
This meeting is being held in accordance with the Urban Meeting Act and JSA 10-4-6 that set, if not sufficient, subject to record and Starlight, it will close down in a school building.
And just by way of reminder before we start, we did have a closed executive session prior to the start of this council meeting and consistent with our practice, any specific litigation matters that were discussed, we announced. We did have several workers' compensation matters to be reviewed by the council: Engels, Engle, Summers, Opuku, and Lett, and also civil litigation filed by Captain Nacola. So those were the cases we discussed.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Ms. Barbara Rutter here, looking back on the street up here. Ms. Franklin Taglin, Ms. Lynn Carroll.
Here.
Mayor Olbruck.
Here. Could everybody please rise for the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation on your own. In this long, delivered in justice.
There are no proclamations or preservations this evening, no mitts to approve, so we'll go right to city managers before you.
Thank you, Mayor. Number one, our June 27 council meeting has been canceled, so please update your calendars accordingly. Number two, our splash pads are now open on the weekends from 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Please refer to our website for additional information regarding our summer scheduling. Number three, the city shred event is scheduled for Saturday, June 24th, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at Johnson Park. The city's Pride Month flag raising ceremony is scheduled for June 15th at 3:00 p.m. at Atlantic Street Park. The city will host our Juneteenth festival on June 17th at Carver Park. Come join us for Day filled with music, fun, and activities for all. Number six, we are also preparing to kick off our summer concert series at the Fourth of July event in Faschini Park. Please refer to our social media and website for details. Couple updates, the issue with possible installation of speed tables on Spring Valley Avenue. The city had an impact study completed by the Burt, by Burt County Engineering. It does not recommend installation based on the results of the report. The city will move forward and apply for an NJDOT Municipal A grant to add comming devices along Spring Valley, along this road. Another update, the crosswalk installation at Atlantic and Prospect. I know Mr. Smith is not here, I should have brought this to his attention before, but the grant was appropriated in 2022, but the funds were allocated to another road improvement program. Neglia's proposal to install these crosswalks will be accepted once our bond ordinance is passed, and work will then be scheduled thereafter. Last update I have is in reference to Carver Park, Second Street Park. Just today, they finished paving one of the basketball courts that was, is part of the overall. that was, is part of the overall new basketball courts that we're going to put in there. The reason for this is, is the bids went out for the installation and the complete renovation of all of the basketball courts at Carver Park. However, when the bids came in, there is a delay by the contractor that it was awarded, that they cannot get the, get in there due to other scheduled items from this company evidently, until the fall and with the completion in the spring of 2024. Because it was going to be extended longer than we expected, we decided to pave that parking lot at no cost to the city, but from my contractor. We're going to line it on this Thursday, correctly on Thursday, and that basketball court now will be open throughout the summer, so the kids can use the court for the summer. If we were to, if we didn't have this delay, construction would have started, and we would have had an issue where none of the courts would be available. So because of the delay that was beyond the city's control in the bid award, this was the decision that the city made, and I think it's, it's a good one to keep the, the park and specifically that basketball court temporarily open with the pavement. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Onto new business, Resolution 231-23.
This is a resolution for final adoption of ordinance number 26-2023. An ordinance to amend Chapter 170 of the Code of the City of Hackensack vehicles and traffic to remove a loading zone on Main Street and Ward Street. This ordinance has been published according to law and now calls for a public hearing.
Motion to close to the public?
Yes.
Okay. Roll call.
Councilmember Ron Rudenberg, I. Secretary of State, here.
Aye.
Councilmember Taglia, aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Carroll, aye.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Anybody from the public who'd like to speak to this ordinance, and this ordinance only, please come forward. Seeing no members from the public, motion to close to the public?
Yes.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Ron Rudenberg, aye. Secretary of State, here.
Aye.
Councilmember Taglia, aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Carroll, aye.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Hackensack, County of Bergen, and State of New Jersey. That ordinance number 26-2023 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution 232-23.
This is a resolution for final adoption of ordinance number 27-2023. An ordinance fixing and determining municipal class position titles and salary ranges for certain contractual and non-contractual officers and employees of the City of Hackensack. This ordinance has been published according to law and now calls for a public hearing.
Thank you. Any motion, please?
Yes.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Ron Rudenberg, aye. Secretary of State, here.
Second.
Councilmember Taglia, aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Carroll, aye.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Hackensack, County of Bergen, and State of New Jersey. That ordinance number 26-2023 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution 232-23.
This is a resolution for final adoption of ordinance number 27-2023. An ordinance fixing and determining municipal class position titles and salary ranges for certain contractual and non-contractual officers and employees of the City of Hackensack. This ordinance has been published according to law and now calls for a public hearing.
Thank you. Any motion, please?
Yes.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Ron Rudenberg, aye. Secretary of State, here.
Second.
Councilmember Taglia, aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Carroll, aye.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Hackensack, County of Bergen, and State of New Jersey. That ordinance number 26-2023 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution 233-23.
This is a resolution for the introduction of ordinance number 28-2023. An ordinance amending City of Hackensack redevelopment plan governing the Main Street area in need of rehabilitation.
Need a motion, please?
Yes.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Ron Rudenberg, aye. Secretary of State, here.
Second.
Councilmember Taglia, aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Carroll, aye.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Need a motion to adopt the ordinance, please?
Yes.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Ron Rudenberg, aye. Secretary of State, here.
Second.
Councilmember Taglia, aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Carroll, aye.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Need a motion to adopt the ordinance, please?
Yes.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Ron Rudenberg, aye. Secretary of State, here.
Second.
Councilmember Taglia, aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Carroll, aye.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Need a motion to adopt the ordinance, please?
Yes.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Ron Rudenberg, aye. Secretary of State, here.
Second.
Councilmember Taglia, aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Carroll, aye.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Hackensack, County of Bergen, and State of New Jersey. That ordinance number 27-2023 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution 233-23.
This is a resolution for the introduction of ordinance number 28-2023. An ordinance amending City of Hackensack redevelopment plan governing the Main Street area in need of rehabilitation.
Need a motion, please?
Yes.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Ron Rudenberg, aye. Secretary of State, here.
Second.
Councilmember Taglia, aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Carroll, aye.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Need a motion to adopt the ordinance, please?
Yes.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Ron Rudenberg, aye. Secretary of State, here.
Second.
Councilmember Taglia, aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Carroll, aye.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Hackensack, County of Bergen, and State of New Jersey. That ordinance number 27-2023 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution 233-23.
This is a resolution for the introduction of ordinance number 28-2023. An ordinance amending City of Hackensack redevelopment plan governing the Main Street area in need of rehabilitation.
Need a motion, please?
Yes.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Ron Rudenberg, aye. Secretary of State, here.
Second.
Councilmember Taglia, aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Carroll, aye.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Be resolved by the above ordinance being ordinance 28-2023 is introduced is now passed on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on July 10th, 2023, at 8 o'clock p.m. or soon thereafter, as a matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the City Council. And at such time and place, all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. And that the city clerk being she is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with the notice of its introduction and passage on first reading and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Thank you. Resolution 234-23.
This is a resolution for the introduction of ordinance number 29-2023. An ordinance to amend Chapter 170 of the Code of the City of Hackensack parking to update, to update various provisions regulating parking meters.
Need a motion, please?
Yes.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Ron Rudenberg, aye. Secretary of State, here.
Second.
Councilmember Taglia, aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Carroll, aye.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Be resolved that the above ordinance being ordinance 30-2023 is introduced is now passed on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on July 10th, 2023, at 8 o'clock p.m. or soon thereafter, as a matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the City Council. And at such time and place, all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance and that the city clerk being she is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with the notice of its introduction and passage on first reading and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Thank you. Resolution 234-23.
This is a resolution for the introduction of ordinance number 29-2023. An ordinance to amend Chapter 170 of the Code of the City of Hackensack parking to update, to update various provisions regulating parking meters.
Need a motion, please?
Yes.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Ron Rudenberg, aye. Secretary of State, here.
Second.
Councilmember Taglia, aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Carroll, aye.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Be resolved that the above ordinance being ordinance 29-2023 is introduced is now passed on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on July 10th, 2023, at 8 o'clock p.m. or soon thereafter, as a matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the City Council. And at such time and place, all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance and that the city clerk being she is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with the notice of its introduction and passage on first reading and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Thank you. Resolution 235-23.
This is a resolution for the introduction of ordinance number 30-2023. A bond ordinance providing for various 2023 capital improvements by and in the City of Hackensack. In the County of Bergen, State of New Jersey, incorporating $2,700,000, therefore, and authorizing payments of $2,629,200 bonds, or notes of the city to find as supportive as possible.
Need a motion?
Yes.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Ron Rudenberg, aye. Secretary of State, here.
Second.
Councilmember Taglia, aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Carroll, aye.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Be here resolved that the above ordinance being ordinance 30-2023 is introduced is now passed on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on July 10th, 2023, at 8 o'clock p.m. or soon thereafter, as a matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the City Council. And at such time and place, all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. And that the city clerk being she is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with the notice of its introduction and passage on first reading and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Thank you. Resolution 235-23.
This is a resolution for the introduction of ordinance number 30-2023. A bond ordinance providing for various 2023 capital improvements by and in the City of Hackensack. In the County of Bergen, State of New Jersey, incorporating $2,700,000, therefore, and authorizing payments of $2,629,200 bonds, or notes of the city to find as supportive as possible.
Need a motion?
Yes.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Ron Rudenberg, aye. Secretary of State, here.
Second.
Councilmember Taglia, aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Carroll, aye.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Be here resolved that the above ordinance being ordinance 30-2023 is introduced is now passed on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on July 10th, 2023, at 8 o'clock p.m. or soon thereafter, as a matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the City Council. And at such time and place, all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. And that the city clerk being she is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with the notice of its introduction and passage on first reading and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Thank you. Resolution 235-23.
This is a resolution for the introduction of ordinance number 30-2023. A bond ordinance providing for various 2023 capital improvements by and in the City of Hackensack. In the County of Bergen, State of New Jersey, incorporating $2,700,000, therefore, and authorizing payments of $2,629,200 bonds, or notes of the city to find as supportive as possible.
Need a motion?
Yes.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Ron Rudenberg, aye. Secretary of State, here.
Second.
Councilmember Taglia, aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Carroll, aye.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Be here resolved that the above ordinance being ordinance 30-2023 is introduced is now passed on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on July 10th, 2023, at 8 o'clock p.m. or soon thereafter, as a matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the City Council. And at such time and place, all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance and that the city clerk being she is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with the notice of its introduction and passage on first reading and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Thank you. 236-23.
This is a resolution authorizing tax refunds for state full judgment, ticket payments, and overpayment.
Need a motion, please?
Yes.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Ron Rudenberg, aye. Secretary of State, here.
Second.
Councilmember Taglia, aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Carroll, aye.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution 239-23.
This is a resolution awarding bid contract for earthquake preparation of Johnson Park's water facility to file concrete construction.
Need a motion, please?
Yes.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Ron Rudenberg, aye. Secretary of State, here.
Second.
Councilmember Taglia, aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Carroll, aye.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution 240-23.
This is a resolution awarding bid contracts for Anderson Street range area combined sewer separation to new French concrete construction.
Need a motion, please?
Yes.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Ron Rudenberg, aye. Secretary of State, here.
Second.
Councilmember Taglia, aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Carroll, aye.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution 242-23.
This is a resolution awarding bid contracts for Anderson Street range area combined sewer separation to new French concrete construction.
Need a motion, please?
Yes.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Ron Rudenberg, aye. Secretary of State, here.
Second.
Councilmember Taglia, aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Carroll, aye.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution 242-23.
This is a resolution authorizing acceptance of a state grant from the State of New Jersey Division of Highway Traffic Safety for clicker or ticket.
Need a motion?
Yes.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Ron Rudenberg, aye. Secretary of State, here.
Second.
Councilmember Taglia, aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Carroll, aye.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution 238-23.
This is a resolution authorizing tax appeal attorney to settle the cases on the cash list dated June 1st, 2023 that were scheduled for trial or settlement.
Need a motion, please?
Yes.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Ron Rudenberg, aye. Secretary of State, here.
Second.
Councilmember Taglia, aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Carroll, aye.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution 238-23.
This is a resolution authorizing bid contract for earthwork preparation of Johnson Park's water facility to file concrete construction.
Need a motion, please?
Yes.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Ron Rudenberg, aye. Secretary of State, here.
Second.
Councilmember Taglia, aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Carroll, aye.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution 239-23.
This is a resolution awarding bid contract for earthquake preparation of Johnson Park's water facility to file concrete construction.
Need a motion, please?
Yes.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Ron Rudenberg, aye. Secretary of State, here.
Second.
Councilmember Taglia, aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Carroll, aye.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution 239-23.
This is a resolution awarding bid contract for earthquake preparation of Johnson Park's water facility to file concrete construction.
Need a motion, please?
Yes.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Ron Rudenberg, aye. Secretary of State, here.
Second.
Councilmember Taglia, aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Carroll, aye.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution 240-23.
This is a resolution awarding bid contract for Anderson Street range area combined sewer separation to new French concrete construction.
Need a motion, please?
Yes.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Ron Rudenberg, aye. Secretary of State, here.
Second.
Councilmember Taglia, aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Carroll, aye.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution 240-23.
This is a resolution awarding bid contract for Anderson Street range area combined sewer separation to new French concrete construction.
Need a motion, please?
Yes.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Ron Rudenberg, aye. Secretary of State, here.
Second.
Councilmember Taglia, aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Carroll, aye.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution 242-23.
This is a resolution awarding change order number one to Roman E. G. Corp. for Clay Street combined sewer separation contract number two.
Need a motion?
Yes.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Ron Rudenberg, aye. Secretary of State, here.
Second.
Councilmember Taglia, aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Carroll, aye.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution 242-23.
This is a resolution requesting approval of items of revenue appropriation, NJSA 40A-4-87, ARP firefighter 2022 grant.
Need a motion, please?
Yes.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Ron Rudenberg, aye. Secretary of State, here.
Second.
Councilmember Taglia, aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Carroll, aye.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution 242-23.
This is a resolution requesting approval of items of revenue and appropriation, NJSA 40A-4-87, ARP firefighter 2022 grant.
Need a motion, please?
Yes.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Ron Rudenberg, aye. Secretary of State, here.
Second.
Councilmember Taglia, aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Carroll, aye.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution 243-23.
This is a resolution awarding contract for engineering services to suburban engineers for fire and quarters remediation construction takes.
Need a motion?
Yes.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Ron Rudenberg, aye. Secretary of State, here.
Second.
Councilmember Taglia, aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Carroll, aye.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution 244-23.
This is a resolution awarding contract to suburban engineering for various sanitary sewer improvements.
Need a motion?
Yes.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Ron Rudenberg, aye. Secretary of State, here.
Second.
Councilmember Taglia, aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Carroll, aye.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. 245-23.
This is a resolution awarding contract to suburban engineering for various sanitary sewer improvements.
Need a motion?
Yes.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Ron Rudenberg, aye. Secretary of State, here.
Second.
Councilmember Taglia, aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Carroll, aye.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution 244-23.
This is a resolution awarding contract to suburban engineering for various sanitary sewer improvements.
Need a motion?
Yes.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Ron Rudenberg, aye. Secretary of State, here. This is a resolution awarding contracts to suburban engineering for various sanitary sewer improvements.
Need your motion?
Offer.
Second. Roll call?
Councilmember Ron Rudenberg, Deputy Mayor Constrino, Councilmember Taglia, Councilmember Carroll, Mayor LaBrosse.
Aye. Two forty-five dash twenty-three.
Resolution awarding contract to suburban consulting engineers for engineering analysis and design FEMA hazard mitigation program grant HMPG project.
Need your motion please?
Offer.
Second. Roll call?
Councilmember Ron Rudenberg, Deputy Mayor Constrino, hi. Councilmember Taglia, Councilmember Carroll, Mayor LaBrosse.
Aye. Resolution two forty-six dash twenty-three.
A resolution authorizing awarding of contract to first suit in transportation for summer camp bus transportation.
Need your motion please?
Offer.
Second. Roll call?
Councilmember Ron Rudenberg, Deputy Mayor Constrino, hi. Councilmember Taglia, Councilmember Carroll, Mayor LaBrosse.
Aye. Resolution two forty-seven dash twenty-three.
A resolution supporting the Burton County Fire Mutual Aid Plan in the City of Hackensack County, Virginia, New Jersey.
Need your motion?
Offer.
Second. Roll call?
Councilmember Ron Rudenberg, Deputy Mayor Constrino, hi. Councilmember Taglia, Councilmember Carroll, Mayor LaBrosse.
Aye. Resolution two forty-eight dash twenty-three.
A resolution authorizing payment of bills.
Need your motion to pay the bills?
Offer.
Second. Roll call?
Councilmember Ron Rudenberg, hi. Deputy Mayor Constrino, hi. Councilmember Taglia, Councilmember Carroll, Mayor LaBrosse.
Aye, I see. With that, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Does anybody have any complaints that they see on the consent agenda?
Following on it to consider to be routine in nature and will be enacted in motion. Any items requiring expenditure are supported by certification of availability of funds. Any item requiring discussion will be removed from consent agenda. Consent agenda items will be reflected in full in the minutes, including any exceptions and or additions. Consists of resolution two forty-nine dash twenty-three through two sixty-two dash twenty-three. Resolution two forty-nine dash twenty-three. Resolution authorizing recreation refunds. Resolution two fifty dash twenty-three. Resolution authorizing building refunds. Resolution two fifty-one dash twenty-three is a resolution authorizing leave of absence without pay for Franco Lio supervisor traffic maintenance from May twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-three to July ninth, twenty-twenty-three. Resolution two fifty-two dash twenty-three is a resolution authorizing renewal of liquor licenses for twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four licenser. Resolution two fifty-three dash twenty-three is a resolution recognizing tonight Nation Gun Violence Awareness Day. Resolution two fifty-three dash twenty-three is a resolution celebrating twoteenth in honor of Hackensack's African-American community. Resolution two fifty-five dash twenty-three is a resolution authorizing board appointment. Resolution two fifty-six dash twenty-three is a resolution authorizing health department refunds. Resolution two fifty-seven dash twenty-three is a resolution authorizing memorandum of understanding for child to blood exposure convention project between Burton County Department of Health Services and the City of Hackensack. Resolution two fifty-eight dash twenty-three is a resolution authorizing lease of escrow for eight ninety-nine Main Street. Resolution two fifty-nine dash twenty-three is a resolution authorizing the issuance of requests for qualifications for professional services to the City of Hackensack. Resolution two sixty dash twenty-three is a resolution authorizing professional service agreement with Chasing Line, Perro, Malone, and Capuzio and PC as special counsel for tax appeals. Resolution two sixty-one dash twenty-three is a resolution awarding professional service agreement to, I'm not sure how to pronounce all of these things.
Trent Isabella.
Trent Isabella, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay, Trent Isabella, et cetera, et cetera, as special counsel for tax appeals. Resolution two sixty-two dash twenty-three is a resolution authorizing approval to submit a grant application and execute a grant contract with the New Jersey Department of Transportation for the Spring Valley Avenue pedestrian safety and traffic calming improvement project fiscal year twenty-twenty-six. That being said.
Need your motion to adopt the consent agenda as it was just read?
Offer.
Second. Roll call?
Councilmember Ron Rudenberg, hi. Deputy Mayor Constrino, hi. Councilmember Taglia, Councilmember Carroll, Mayor LaBrosse.
Aye. With that, need your motion to open to the public, please?
Offer.
Second. Roll call?
Councilmember Ron Rudenberg, hi. Deputy Mayor Constrino, hi. Councilmember Taglia, Councilmember Carroll, Mayor LaBrosse.
Aye. Anybody from the public who would like to speak, please come forward, give your name to the clerk, and you will have three minutes.
Good evening, Reverend Carolyn Davis. First of all, I want to thank you for the blinking stop line, stop sign by Werewell and Central Avenue. Hopefully, it will stop some of the accidents that we've had there in the past. I'm just going to make a statement, just a statement from myself, not looking for any answers, but it's a general statement. We are living in a society right now where time is coming again. Those of us of the black and brown community watch innocent black and brown blood being spilled in the street, in their apartment eating ice cream, in their own apartment sleeping in their own bed at night, shocked through a door because some people think we don't have a right to stand our ground or speak our opinion. Enough is enough, and I can speak for myself, I will do everything in my power to fight against even the slightest hint of it occurring here. That being said, harassment is very well-known in society to be pervasive in the workplace. It's a known fact. It's all over. For harassment to be harassment, it must involve discrimination against a protected class of people. It must involve some level of severity or pervasiveness that affects one's ability to work. Even simply a feeling that your job may be in jeopardy caused by others could be deemed as harassment. And the best way to prove it is a timeline, evidence, and witness. Rumor has it, I'm saying rumor has it, I'm not calling any names, rumor has that some of our brown and black employees are feeling harassed and working in a hostile environment. This is not Florida or Michigan. This is Burton County and will not be tolerated here. And any employee that feels that way here will have lots of support. God is watching us, and the truth will come to light eventually. And mayor and council, it is your responsibility to make sure that every employee in this town, black, brown, whatever, especially a black and brown community, living in the society we live in, feel free to voice their opinions without feeling threatened for loss of job or intimidation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person from the public, please?
I'm Rich Servo, C R B O. I'm on Spring Valley Avenue, and I'm disappointed that the county didn't think so much of the turbulence on Spring Valley Avenue. So, whatever. But the names that on that post was Siddiqui and Shedanian, and it's, okay?
I didn't want to screw them up, so rather than have somebody mad at me.
No, okay.
Shedanian, the third one was the one that I was gonna lose it on. I appreciate that.
I don't, I don't have much time here, of course, because we're just pushed out after one round of fighting. Three minutes is one round of fighting, so let's fight. And the first thing is, this temperature here is ridiculous, and to keep this this cool in here is very expensive. I know it. So, the taxpayers are paying to keep this cold in here. It's too cold, all right? So, that's that. All right, number two is, you know, there's still the COVID going on. We're going into the fourth year of this. It's being manipulated in different ways. It's still happening in healthcare facilities. People are testing positive and all that. So, I wanted to call the Health Department to find out what's going on. Can we get an update? And I agree with the gentleman that was here earlier, talking about Linden Avenue, Linden Place, that nobody answers the phone at the Health Department. So, that's number two. Check into it, all right? Nobody answers the phone at the Health Department. Number three is, what's going on with the liquor store or liquor license somehow that the city is involved in selling booze now? What's that all about? Did I see that, did I see that online, that a state liquor license is going to be issued to the City of Hackensack? Because many states around the, around the nation have state liquor sales. You go into New England stores, and the state is selling booze in there. Now, I read something.
Where?
On, it's, it's posted online. It is. Check it out. It's something about a state liquor license granted here, and the, there, it's, the mayor and council are responsible. So, you better look at what's going on on the, on the website about booze, wine, and liquor being sold in the name of the state of New Jersey, but sort of the subtitle being, it's being sold by Hackensack. So, check it out, okay?
The old Google doesn't show anything.
I don't, I don't know. I mean, I think there's a lot of things in question right now.
It's on the Hackensack. I'll tell you in a minute, okay? Go ahead.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Good evening, Reverend Carolyn Davis. It's nice that the courts are being paved, but my question is, what took it so long? We knew about the conditions of the courts, the basketball courts, before last summer. So, what took it so long to get bids in? I mean, we're going into the second summer of, you know, of the kids not being able to play as of yet. They will, but as of yet, you know? I'd like to know that. Also, will the kids who are playing in the rec league, the basketball rec league, will they continue to play in the rec building for the summer? Okay.
I can't answer that for sure, but I believe some of them.
Okay.
Our rec kids get first shot, so.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so they, they won't have to go to Carver Park, the youngsters?
They don't, yeah.
Yes, okay. Okay, okay. Who is the person who determines the amount of merit pay raises for non-union employees?
I would say it's probably me.
It's probably you?
You know, but it's not as simple as that, you know? I would do it under the advice and consent of the council as well, you know? But the ultimate decision, it would be from me. I mean, I think you have to, there's other things that have to be taken into consideration of that.
And you determine the amount of raise that the council gets also?
I, I guess I would, yes. I mean, they're elected officials. That's a little bit different than an employee. You know, they're, they are provided an amount of money yearly for their elected position.
Yes.
So.
Okay. Who is the EEOC officer for the city government?
That would be our Cassandra Shishardi, Arcane Resources Coordinator.
Okay. And, oh, last thing. A lot of the senior citizens were complaining about the last luncheon. In the past, we've had beautiful lunches, lots of food, various amounts of food, entertainment, just beautiful lunches. And this year, they said they got cookies, donuts, tea, and coffee. They could've stayed home. What happened?
It's the first time hearing of it. I'll check on it. I'll check, was it run through recreation? Was it over recreation?
I think so, yeah.
So, we'll check with recreation what happened, especially lunch, not it.
Yeah, 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 a lot of grumbling, a lot of grumbling.
It's the first time hearing of it, so we'll look into it.
Okay, thank you.
But we did have great lunches for the seniors every year.
Absolutely.
Yes, and Valentine's Day, and Thanksgiving, that is. Is it Thanksgiving? Only you said it, Thanksgiving.
And one year, we had Black History Month luncheon also. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next person, please?
Good evening, Eva Irving. I have a question. This is a follow-up, one of the park questions, Fashini Park. I am a baseball mom. I spent a lot of time at Fashini over the spring, and I was wondering if we could get some update in terms of what's happening with the Fashini Park improvements, how that's going, when that's gonna start, what that looks like in terms of our budget and things like that.
We did do, certainly, we did do an update on that in the earlier evening. I'm looking, I don't have to pay for it. You got it?
There's nothing else you want to talk about first before I do that, because you have your clock.
No, that's it. That was the primary question.
The Fashini Park update is the first field study addressed on Field seven, eight, and nine, which are closest to the river. The most recent update is that the money to do the park has been bonded and funded, which is a considerable amount of money. We're just, right now, the only holdup to go out to bid for the actual construction of it is we're waiting for the DEP to get back to us, because those specific fields are close to the river. So, the DEP needs to provide us with a permit. We've already done the geotech analysis of it, in other words, core drilling to make sure that the new turf fields that are gonna go there will be able to, you know, be on a proper surface. But if, the only holdup right now is just the DEP permit, and it's been submitted for a while, so we're hoping to get that back pretty soon. The anticipated start is probably either the fall of this year or early in twenty-twenty-four.
Is it expected to be completed in twenty-twenty-four?
The idea is, we're, yes, and we're trying to get it, that's phase one. You know, there's nine or ten fields there. This is the first three that we're doing, and then we'll move on to the second phase and the third phase, depending how this goes. But the fields are gonna get all new lights, new turf, new concession stand, to address some parking issues over there, and that's just the first phase of that project.
And we already have a contractor that's wanted bid for that?
No, it has not actually, the specifications can't be done until the DEP gives us the permit. Once the DEP gives us the permit, we'll, we'll, our engineering will compile the specs, it'll go out to bid, and then, you know, within thirty days, usually, we should have an answer on it to approve the contract.
Let me just add, there will be a football field?
Yes.
For our junior football to play on, which they never had.
Not in the first phase, but.
No, they want to have coming phases with lights, so they'll be able to have their night games there. Junior football's never had a field in their own, except for the outfield of the large field at Fashini, so that, you know, I think football deserves it. I think it's great that there's gonna be a football field in September.
Okay, thanks, we'll be watching.
Thanks, please.
Good evening, Blanche Stewart, Third Street, Hackensack. I'm a little confused about the Carver Park situation with the basketball courts. You paved it, I believe, today? When are you going to mine it?
Thursday.
Thursday? And when will, when are the nets going up, for one thing?
They will go up this week, before Friday.
And then children will be able to use it when?
I would say by this weekend.
Okay. Do realize that we also have Juneteenth coming. But my concern is that, again, we're a whole year later, almost two years now that we haven't been able to use the courts. We had a vibrant summer league there for the last, I don't know how many years. I see that you've done Stye Park, you're working on Fashini Park, and now we're getting a rush job on Carver Park. And we don't know what the next phase is, when they're gonna be able to do the other courts.
September. Well, that's good, yeah, that's gonna happen in September.
Why?
That'll happen in September.
Why so long? We had two years.
Because what happened is, the contractor that we are work, right, in using the same person, like the older company, and the guy is so busy that he say right from the beginning, it's the same guy that did Columbus Park, he wanna do Carver Park, but he say that the only part that you're gonna be available is starting in September. So, that's the reason we decide to do what we did then.
But why do we?
And don't cost a penny to the taxpayer.
Costs the children not to be able to play there, and the other.
I'm afraid baby, but it costs a penny.
Why would you accept a delay when you could get somebody else who could do the same situation?
You have to understand, the courts that we're putting in there are not your typical court. We're putting most tension concrete courts in there. And there's only a certain group of people that actually do that type of work. Well, the reason why we're using that is what we use at Columbus, is because there's a thirty-year guarantee on the courts. If we were just paved them or used regular concrete, we're looking at ten, maybe fifteen years at the most, and you'd have the same situation like we had in half.
Right, so Columbus Park has been done already. Carver Park, which is really used mostly for the summer league and for basketball, why wouldn't that have been done first? That's just a question. I'm a little concerned about that. It's like, you push your bag, and that's the most important basketball league.
Oh, yeah, no.
Excuse me?
The M and M Building, they been using it.
There's no, well, the M and M Building, but I'm talking about Carver Park, where most people play, where most of the kids who play basketball live.
One of the reasons is because we modify the part in a way they're gonna have the two field almost equal, and the type of work they're gonna be doing there is top notch. You wanna see the field, and then you're gonna be happy.
Okay, I, I, you know, my time is up. I'm still a little confused. I mean, they may be a company that does it top notch, but can't tell me that there's not more than one company that can do that same job. Thank you.
Good evening, Natasha Taylor, in Oak Place. Also, my, my kids play baseball and basketball, so Fashini Park is definitely an issue also. I'm not sure about how long that's taken, but it seems like the plans just keep getting done over and done over. I'm a little confused about that.
Some of the plan, there have been, I would say, at least two revisions to it. The first revision.
And I'm sure it's very expensive to, to do revisions to the plans, right?
Well, the, the reason for the revisions are cost. You know, when we, we, we had a, you know, a pie in the sky type of thing that we were looking for there initially, that didn't work out, so we had to cut it back a little bit. That's another reason why we're doing it in phases, instead of doing it all in one shot, because of the cost. But as far as the, the fields go, there, there's been two changes on the, the type of fields. We originally wanted to put track, I mean, Mr. Carroll wanted a, a track around the football field, because we're putting a new football field in there, and we just couldn't fit it based on the design. That was the only reason why that was taken out. So, there's been some changes, and every time you make a change, that has to be resubmitted to the DEP. So, there have been some delays.
We probably should be a little bit more careful about the, what we're planning and what we want to rethink before we do it, so we're not doing it over and over again, because it does cost a lot. Again, I just, I don't wanna run out of time.
Okay. We'll give you, every time that I was talking.
Okay. Like Carver Park, I know that they, they did the asphalt today. You know, no one knew that it was gonna happen today, but for anybody that's played basketball, you understand that the, the ground is a certain level to play basketball, and hoops are a certain level to play. So, if you put something over it, that takes away from where the hoops are. So, even if temporarily, the kids are playing that way, that hurts and hinders them as players to play like that. Most of the kids, like previous, that live in that area, play basketball. That's where they go to practice, that's where they go to train, that's where they go to get better. So, having a temporary fix like that, it actually hurts them in the long run. So, I understand that we want something, but I feel like if there is a, there's a delay right now, I'm hoping, I, I'd like you, I'd like to know, what are the chances that there's gonna be more of a delay? Because it sounds like every time we come to this point, there's another delay.
With Carver Park, I can't anticipate any more delays, other than getting the contractor in there in September. That's, you know, I mean, anything can happen, man, you know? I can't say, you know, you know, the contractor could go belly up. I mean, we don't know, you know? We're blinded by state contract laws on how things are approved and who the contractors are. Somebody said there's other contractors that could do the work. They didn't bid it. So, if they don't bid it, we're, we're limited to, ooh, we can actually, you know, award the bid to. So, that's why we run into these type of problems. Like, same thing, we took so long, we'll give you your time. The same thing, we took so long with, with Stye Park. Stye Park was awarded, we awarded a contractor that was, should never have gotten the job, and it was nothing but delays from, from the word go, but we had to award to that particular contract. Hopefully, it'll never ever work in the city act again, but that's what we had to deal with.
Well, we just hope that the same motivation to fix all the other parks is put into Carver Park, because as you guys have noticed, like what's happened over the past few weeks in that park, I don't even want the kids to go there right now. So, it, it needs to be fixed, because you know what happens when something is left out? It just gets worse and worse, and it becomes a problem for all of our kids. I'm, I'm, I'm very concerned. I was really sad to hear about what happened just recently, and there were kids in the park that day. And that happens in the parks that are left unkept, so we need to do a better job keeping that park.
Next name from the public.
Good evening, Bridget. I'm here to talk about two things. Reverend Davis said about people being in leadership roles and being disrespectful and not knowing how to talk to employees. I'm gonna tell you this, and I'm gonna tell you this one time and one time only. This is not a plantation. These are workers that work here are not slaves. You will respect them. You will talk to them with respect, and you better tell your leaders who you put in those positions, they better learn how to talk to them with respect. We won't stand for the disrespect anymore. It, it's getting out of hand. It's, it shouldn't be tolerated in any workplace. If you have people in positions that don't have certifications, degrees, or any other things that are need for that job, then you need to remove them, and you need to find people that do have those certifications and those degrees, so that way, we will not have what is going on here. The other thing about the park, how many times has Fashini Park plans been redone, and what is the cost for each redo?
I believe there were two design changes, if I remember correctly. I don't know the exact amount, but it was whatever the engineering cost would have been.
Who else would know the actual, okay, do that and give me a cost, because I think that's very, very expensive. And as far as Carver Park, yes, I was there this morning when Leo explained to me what was going on, why the park was being tarred over and everything, and I do understand Natasha's concern about the height of the park and the basketball courts and stuff for our children. But the one thing we won't tolerate is showing your racist and racism, how can I say this? Way of thinking when it comes to Carver Park. Just like she said, the way you do for the other parks around the city, do the same here. Do the same in this neighborhood. Dave Sims was the one person that was part of that park. I saw him there this morning, but I don't know if any backdoor deals are being made for him with that park, but I'm here to tell you, please do right by the children of this community. Thank you.
Good evening, Reverend Dr. Drew Kendall-Ross, New Hope Baptist Church. I have a question, and I raised it a couple of months or more ago in a private meeting that we had as community members who have some standing in the community. Has there been any thought to some surveillance cameras within the communities, and how quickly has that been given? And how quickly has that been given priority? And the reason I'm asking is because I think that it is dangerous to some of our organizations when the city calls and asks organizations for footage from its cameras in order to provide you all with video footage of what's happening for those kind of events within the community. And I think that for it to be, uh, said that there was no real footage of what happened in Carver Park that day is a nightmare to our community, especially when those things are advertised. Because what it does is, it leaves us vulnerable to people knowing that they are not going to be held accountable if something happens. And I think that there needs to be some consideration to that. The second thing I'll say is, I really hope that there is more visibility from the council in the community, um, for the events that are happening in the city. And that's been a concern of mine for some time. And I will say that I've seen certain members of the council out, uh, at invitations, and others I do not ever see out at anything. And it was confirmed, even when we were talking about the senior event that happened, and none of you all knew what was served, because none of you all were probably there. And I think that that is a crying shame, because our seniors deserve representation from those who are serving in the community to come to the events. Thank you.
Yes, um, I can, I can tell you, we're happy to say that we just installed five high-definition, um, cameras at five different locations in the city right now as part of a pilot program, similar to something that you would see in other larger cities that, um, will be monitored by the police department, um, and are constantly recording those type of things. Right now, we picked five areas based on statistical information within the city regarding higher crime areas, and that's where those cameras are located right now. Um, it's our intention, we just, at our last council meeting, uh, our police director actually had the company that's running these cameras uh, come and explain to us and explain to the council how useful they will be for exactly what you're talking about, um, for deterrents or, or God forbid, something actually happens. We would have that information. So we are moving forward very quickly with that. They're, they're not cheap, they're expensive, um, so it's not a situation where we can, um, you know, get them all in one shot. So we're trying to work, work on that now, but they are, we are looking at that. And like I said, five have been installed so far.
And are the locations of those, uh, non-disclosed, can you say where they are?
No, they're non-disclosed. We could, we could tell you where they are. Um, I, I don't know the exact location straight offhand. I know one is at Central and...
Central and Fair.
Central and Fair.
Running by, uh, Hudson Street by the liquor store.
Hudson by the liquor store.
Running in Maine.
Maine and Salem. Salem?
Yeah.
The Maine and Salem.
And...
Anderson, I think there's one on Anderson.
No, one camera by the place that we got the shooting, Essex Street by the...
On Essex Street, yeah, where the last shooting occurred. And I believe that it might be one in the area of Anderson. And our intention is to put a lot more.
So...
Everybody gonna have a camera?
Gotcha. So I'm just saying, I think that somewhere along First Street, there's a priority, right? Because I'm getting a lot of calls for our footage on First Street, and somewhere around Carver Park is a priority as well.
Okay. Well, Carver Park, Carver Park has cameras. The park has cameras. Um, I don't know where the information that you got, you have to understand there's an ongoing investigation with that yet. That may be the reason why the footage is not available. Um, but there are cameras at Carver Park. I know that for a fact. Whether or not they actually caught the incident, I don't know. That would be part of the investigation with the police department that I'm not privy to.
Yeah, I got you. But even when the situation happened up and down First Street with the car that got into an accident with speeding or something like that, we were called in that incident. First Street, right up and down that corridor, is a main thoroughfare in, in Hackensack that has a lot of stuff.
The place being the, the type of situation that you're gonna get, the software, they're gonna follow any particular incident from one corner to the other. So we...
The cameras, the cameras that we're installing, that have been installed and will continue to install, are, they go beyond just a regular camera. Um, you know, there's, uh, AI, artificial intelligence that's involved with them, um, with certain tracking, um, being able to search for certain types of vehicles, uh, a clothing description, something along those lines. So they're very, very advanced system. Thank you.
Next person, please.
Victor from Hackensack. Before I get started, I wish to thank Mr. Carroll for standing up for our history and, and this country, and I salute you, sir. Now, let's get down to the facts here. It came to my attention that there was a problem, or could have been a problem with the acknowledgement of our history, just a small fraction of our history dealing with Juneteenth. And it came to my attention that Kathy Camus Jr. was the problem in, in this situation. You know, let me tell you something, Kathy. I've been on the battlefield fighting for justice for our community, the African American community, for over forty-five years. You don't know me, but I've been fighting for forty-five years. I will lay my life on the line if necessary for this. So if you don't get a, you don't get the opportunity or the chance or anything else you wanna do to speak on our acknowledgement of our history. Our history is America. And maybe you don't understand that, but I'm willing to help you understand that, by giving you a little history lesson anytime you want one. So we can't have that. Our community deserves better. We don't deserve you deciding who can get involved with our acknowledgement of our history, which is called, a small part called Juneteenth. That's all I got to say. Please do not, again, try to use your position to, to tell us how we celebrate our history. Thank you.
I'd like to answer that.
Go ahead.
I have no idea...
Of course you don't.
But, no, I have no idea what you're speaking about.
Of course you don't.
I have nothing involved in...
Oh, please.
To do with the, the Juneteenth event. I'm pleased the city is providing what they are, whatever resources they have to have the Juneteenth event. I have no involvement in the Juneteenth event whatsoever. So I have no idea what you're talking about.
Of course not. You got amnesia. You got basic amnesia.
I have no idea what you're talking about.
Of course not. But I'm here to let you know, you do not have the opportunity.
She spoke to me. No, she spoke to me. She spoke afterwards.
You have no right. You have no right to tell us.
Can we please stop the back and forth?
Tell us how we acknowledge our history. I'm letting you know that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Gwenny Burke, Hackensack, New Jersey. Um, just a couple of questions. I'm probably old. But I noticed, um, the resolution about starting, um, work with the Johnson Park Sports Facility. And I know we do a lot with sports in Hackensack. However, sports is only a portion of our kids. And so we lost the Y. We're not doing anything to replace that in this area. It's in Burkittsville. Kids can't get to Burkittsville. Kids are having a hard time getting to school in, at Jackson Avenue, so they certainly can't get to Burkittsville. And so just curious as to what is the city of Hackensack going to do to provide other opportunities for our kids? Everybody is not sports oriented. There's a whole lot of other things that you can do. And with all of the building that's going on in Hackensack, just curious as to why we're not asking these individuals to port back into Hackensack and to give us facilities to deal with some of the other interests that our kids have. If you go to the schools, they have Lego leagues, they have robotic leagues, they have all kinds of things in the class, in the schools. But there's nothing in the community to feed the mind of our kids. We're real comfortable with feeding them athletically, but we need them to be fit intellectually. And so just curious as to what are we gonna do to replace facilities that we've lost? Um, not just that we lose the Y for kids, there were people who lived there affordably. What are we doing about it? They certainly can't live in the blue apartments that have been built, because people who went to school and have degrees now can't come back here and live, because it is so costly to live here. And so with all of these apartment buildings, the wall cotton, the house and the paper and whatever else they call them, what are we going to do to make sure that Hackensack can stay in Hackensack? We're doing lots of building, but we are losing Hackensack in the process. And so just curious as to what does Hackensack plan to do to keep us here affordably so that we can continue to grow? Juneteenth, first time I heard that it was in Carver Park, so curious as to who's part of the planning. Um, doesn't seem like a lot of people were informed about it. Should have been. Schools by now should have gotten information, churches by now should have gotten the information, a lot of other places by now should have gotten information. And maybe it's just me not hearing, maybe I didn't hear it. That's on me then. But that information should at least gone to the schools so that they're aware of it, so that they get to hear about our history as well. Thank you.
Next person, please.
Good evening, Donna West, Hackensack. Um, I understand that in the past, uh, the prom show-off that is taking place tomorrow at Mount Olive Baptist Church that the city council has often donated, so we were wondering if you would be able to do so again. Uh, very quickly, just wondering if the males on the city council received notice about the e-reads summary program at the Cape Cod Chris School? And I'm not sure if you attended this year, but would like for you to please consider attending again in the fall like you did in the past. Um, the new recycling, uh, schedule, uh, has cans and bottles one week and cardboard the next week. Why are apartment buildings or condo buildings following the same? I live in a condo, and that means that our recycling room is jam-packed from one week, uh, from one week to the next, because they're not putting out. So I was just wondering if that's applicable to the large apartment buildings and condos as well? Um, I piggyback or want to, um, add to what, uh, Gwenny Burke was saying, that I remember we used to have programs such as PAL and other things. We really do need to find some ways to make sure that our children, um, are not idle in the summertime or really any time at all. And the last thing, I remember growing up in Hackensack with parades. And I'm just wondering where that is, where we could, uh, have parades, especially for, uh, moments where we could bring our community together in many more different ways. Thank you.
Next person from the public, please. Seeing that motion to close?
Good evening, Council, Nishan Bolden, John J., President. As you guys well know, you got the invitation. Uh, three weeks, less than three weeks away is the John J. Street Renaming Ceremony, Anderson Street Park. We'd love for you guys to be there. Send out all invitations. We also have, uh, sent out an invitation to Mount Olive Baptist. We're be honoring Pastor Jackson for his continuing work in the community all these years. It's great to have this congregant here. Um, so hopefully see you guys there. We're gonna be, continue to send out invitations as well as sending out to the schools and everywhere we can see in Hackensack, because this is a community building event, um, to change the, the street name. As well, there's gonna be food, great food there, good music, and just combined, you bring the city together, um, for another time and another, right before the Fourth of July weekend. So glad for you guys to be there. Again, Nishan Bolden, thank you, John J.
Thank you, appreciate it. Next question from the public? Willie White? Willie White? Motion to close the vote. Vote close. Are you all in favor?
Aye.
I agree. Is that being a little bit...
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming out. Um, I just wanted to start with Fishini Park, because I don't think there's anyone in this room that wants this project done more than I do. Um, that was one of the first initiatives I had when I came back, came onto the council two trips ago. Um, and there's been a lot of rethoughts, and I, I think, I can appreciate a lot of, um, members in the audience, our, our employees of the school. And I, I think anytime you deal with government or public schools, you want things done sooner than later, and a lot of times, there's just a lot of barriers that they have to face. Um, in regards to the, the, um, plans originally, we had plans, um, for the, for parts of the park, Phase One. And then we soon found out that it would be more cost-effective to do a master plan, because applying to the DEP for permits is very expensive. So what we did was go back and make a master plan for the whole park and adjusted it based on phases and break it down to phases. Um, after that, there was some additional, um, when Mr. Carroll joined the coun, council, um, he, he wanted to put in, put in there, which he should, so there was additional changes, um, that were made as well. And, you know, we worked together to try to come up with the best plan for Fishini Park. So everything that we've done together, um, you know, was, was for the best, you know, looking at what we have to do to better for everyone. Um, Phase One would be fields eight, nine, and ten, um, which are the fields closest to Boulder City. Um, and we had to break it up into phases, but again, going back and making sure that we have a full layout for the whole park, because every time we have to apply for permits again with the DEP, it would just take that much longer. Uh, we've been waiting on permits from the DEP, then the BCUA got involved, we had to get, you know, clearance from them. So every time we feel like returning a corner, there's another, you know, hurdle that we have to face. So I, I never want anyone to think that anyone on this council would sit there and say, oh, you know, I'm a back burner. Um, because those are the things that have to be done. I have, you know, three kids to play baseball and play softball. You know, I would love nothing more for that park, and I believe that park has full potential to be a park that you go to and everyone from around New Jersey comes and says, wow, what a, what a wonderful place. You have all these fields, there are turf, there are lights, parade concessions, you have, like, that's what you wanna be proud of. That's what you want for, for your, for your community. Um, so that, that's the status, um, on Fishini Park. I wish, you know, it was done right away, but it's not, it's not going to be, the whole park is not gonna be done. Um, because it's such a massive undertaking. And then again, because we're close to the river, there's just so many hurdles that, that we've encountered. Um, but I think, you know, again, we're on the same page in regards to plans. There'll be a football field there. We have to adjust some of the, um, the fields in regards to sun, you know, sun glare and, you know, all those little things that go into it. So we're excited. Um, again, I wish it was done, you know, yesterday. But, um, you know, I just, you know, hope and pray that it's gonna be soon, and we're working hard behind the scenes to get it done. Thank you. Have a good night.
All right, as usual, I'd like to talk about some of the things again that are on here that I, I've been involved with, or that I think have importance to the folks that are here. Um, one thing tonight is we cast a resolution for a $2.7 million, can you hear me? I'm sorry.
No.
A $2.7 million bond. Um, so just in a nutshell, some of the things that are incorporated in that bond is a lot of it has to do with our parks. Again, there's additional money coming into Carver Park, Golden Park, um, the Park on, on West Railroad Ave. Um, and also, we're putting lighting protection systems in five of our parks. Uh, some computer upgrades that are going on in the city. Again, as technology changes, some of our hardware, software stuff needs to be updated. Um, and we had to do some soil remediation over on Green Street. There was some illegal dumping that was done there that the city had to remediate for. Uh, our fire department, uh, some of the buildings need improvements, and we were doing them slowly, virtually, so this is some improvements to the summit, have a new fire department. And then also some pedestrian safety improvements throughout the city. Much of this too, a lot of this, or significant amount of this $2.7 million, probably, if I can quickly in my head, maybe one and a half or 1.4 million dollars of that is gonna be returned to us in grants. But the way this, it works, we have to fund it first, and then when the work is done, we receive the grant money. So we're blessed to be soliciting these grants and being able to receive these grants as awards to help offset the cost of continuing to do this work. So in a nutshell, that's... So in a nutshell, that's pretty much what was on there. Some awards, I think, that are of significance that tonight, there was an award for contract work in Johnson Park. There was a significant, I think, $8.8 million award for the Clay Anderson Street area. So we're moving into, we're working closely with, not with the Clay Street sewer work, but the Anderson Street connection. That was a significant award tonight. And then some additional sewer work awards also, some changes in place. You know, pretty much where we are, we were briefed as a committee, the whole meeting. You know, a lot of the work on the east side of the rail, or pretty much all of it, the connectivity is there. Great progress. You know, the new culverts are on the, we're on the west side of the rail. We're just starting work now going under the rail. But what we're seeing is we're seeing some significant improvement in what we're seeing as far as overflows and how that initial work is helping us already. So getting under the rail, getting the culverts now on the east side of that rail is gonna help tremendously. And a lot of this contract work that was awarded tonight will be there supporting that. I think we are looking forward to a busy but exciting and entertaining weekend. I hope everyone enjoys the Juneteenth festivities on Saturday. We thank everyone who has contributed over the course of that. And happy Father's Day to all the fathers that are out there, fathers here on our council. You know, enjoy the day with your family and your children, and we look forward to seeing you next. Thank you.
Yeah, when we're talking about the problem with the parks, everybody know, including every kid that used to be with me and the council, I've been willing to try to do that sport, done for the kids for almost 10 years. Different reasons, different problems, DEP, BCUA, and you name it. Finally, we're gonna get a contractor that gonna start working in the next few weeks in Johnson Park. And I hope so maybe in a year, we're gonna add that facility in the way the kids can play football, baseball, they can practice soccer, they can, they can do so many things, wrestling. I hope so we can get it on maybe in a year. And the payment program continue. We're gonna pay summer, summer revenue from Passay all the way to Spring Valley. We continue working with the police and different institutions in the city to try to control people that are speeding. So sometimes they're gonna be in Spring Valley, or sometimes Fermo, or Rose, or Uplands. But they're gonna be trying to control as much as we can. The people, they really go an average of 40 miles an hour and 25 miles an hour. So in less than two, three hours, you can get 15 tickets for people that don't wanna be according to the rules. And the problem that we got in Stipe Park, now I go there every day to try to push these contractors to get the job done. And where they are in the morning and try to look at the problem that we got in Carver Park. And look like for the next few more, by the time the contractor that was awarded the contract for Carver Park when they start working September, at least they can use the field and have a summer program. More for the adults, because the kids are gonna play in the M and M Building. And we, you have to understand that we try to do the best we can for the kids. And when you're talking about programs, like to try to, well, no, it's poor, but something to get the kids involved in something else related to the schools, you should be going to the Volucation Meeting and try to push for excellence. And I agree that sometimes we say that we try to do the best in the school system, we need help. So you should be going to the Volucation Meeting and push them to try to do better. Thank you.
Leo, can I say something? In regards to the dome, there's no reason why we can't have other programs that are not just sports. Absolutely, we'll have a multipurpose room and, you know, with the M and M Center, hopefully, once those rooms are cleared out and the general building is done in the building department, I think that we should have other things. But in regards to, my children went to Parker, go to Parker School. There is not one program after school that's open for all students there. Here's Lego League, but you have to be chosen. You have to be chosen. So I think that, and again, I would be willing to work with the schools and use different facilities and areas and, you know, it's a lot. I'm proud that the middle school just this year started doing intramural sports. They never had that before. There's never a program for kids after school. Maybe, well, baseball, they didn't have, what, other ones? Oh, you were, okay, all right. My kid, yeah, so I, I don't know, just recently they added baseball, which is great for those kids that, you know, might have not gotten involved in the back and have, but that's a great start too. But I know at my children's school, there is nothing after school unless you're approved to be part of the program. So I think, you know, again, we both have to, you know, do a better job of seeing what interests kids besides just sports and seeing, you know, how we can provide programs for the schools as well, because it's important on both, on both ends to have that for all students. And it's hard for students to get, some students, they're in aftercare, so they can't get to a place that's, you know, they can't get to the M and M Building, but can't get to the dome. It has to be provided on site for them or they miss out. So I think that's something to really look into as well. But working together towards that, I think, is important.
And if I may, I'm not getting to the recreation side, unfortunately, as most of you know that, and I appreciate all the council members that do that part. But I know at the M and M Building, we, I know, and not that forward, but anyway.
It's hard to hear too now.
Oh, I'm sorry, we recently introduced like a keyboarding session or a computer programming session, coding session for children. I think more of those types of things are wonderful, and that's my interest. So to me, when I saw that, I said, that's a great step in the right direction. So I think that we are starting to do things like that, and it's, you know, and it's a change for us. It's something that we haven't really considered for the M and M Building. And I think we can do more of it. But I think that was a good step in the right direction, and I hope to see more of those, I hope to see more, I'm sorry, I can't hear you. I hope to see more of those types of programs on the phone.
And the libraries, too. Don't forget about the library. They have a lot of really good programs that are centrally located, so they have great things going on there.
Thank you. I'd like to thank everyone showing up, sharing their opinions, comments, and concerns. I want everybody at home safe. And God bless you.
Thank you, Jerry. So I'm gonna speak to the park delays, you know, as was just mentioned. Jerry coached, I coached Jerry's kid, Leo coached for years, I coached for years, Stephanie coaches now. So the last thing we want to do is delay something being done on a sports facility or sports field. It hurts me to see kids not being able to play. And yeah, I hadn't raised many questions, especially with Carver Park courts. But when you look back, there's Green Acres issues we had. We had to wait for approval from Green Acres, which, that's a Green Acres facility, which we couldn't do anything until that got approved. So the one thing I've found, being elected official working in local government, and I'm sure it's in big government, and I know it's a big government, is nothing goes fast. I noticed it even with the school system. Any Fairmount people here? Anybody from Fairmount? How long has they been building that elevator at Fairmount School? Pushing two and a half years for one elevator in the school. And I'm not blaming anybody, it just takes a long time if the government's involved. Alright? So the whole, you're limited to a bidding process, and I want to bring up a subject about the bidding process. I thank God we got this group through Carver Park, because the only park we haven't had delays on was Columbus Park. Right? And this is the same group that did Columbus Park. Stipe Park still isn't open, multiple delays of months and months and months and months on that park, which just drives us crazy. And the last thing we want to see is contractors dragging their feet not getting it done. We had it with the M and M Building, we had it at Stipe Park, right? We've had issues in Fishine Park. So when you're at the mercy of the bid system for the state of New Jersey, the fair contract laws and all the stuff they make us go through, you know, yeah, you gotta take. Plus, we have to take the lowest bid. Right? So this guy does a great job, we don't know who this guy is, alright? But he's the low bid. So you end up using this guy because he's cheaper, right? But then they have this little thing called a change order, which you get multiple times during the project. And all of a sudden, his price is up here, the guy you want is over here. So we're getting, you know, we get beat up that way. And that happened-
M and M Building.
The M and M Building. M and M Building costs us a lot more than it should have if we had gone with the contract we wanted to do it, but we weren't allowed to by the state. So we're limited with, you know, explain to everybody to understand, sometimes we're limited on who we can pick. And sometimes there's some workarounds based on if the other company has a bad track record or something you can point out, you can work around that. But we really don't, you know, the last thing we want is to delay the kids using these parks. It's not good for any, it's not good for you guys, it's not good for our kids, it's not good for us, makes us look bad. Alright? The last thing we want, why would we want to make ourselves look bad by delaying things? It's just, you know, it's unfortunate the way some government works. Were there mistakes made? Absolutely. Absolutely, there were some mistakes made. There were mistakes made. There were some engineering issues which caused some major delays, but that's something we wanted to do. I mean, answer the question, what are the developers doing for Hackensack? So the developers aren't, after they get their project built and going, they're not dipping in and throwing out hundreds of thousands of dollars. What they're doing is, their pilot money that's coming in is what's paying for a lot of sewer work, a lot of the work that you saw tonight on our docket. That money, you know, with the projects filled, I understand change is tough. We all remember the great Hackensack with the great downtown, alright? Our downtown was shot, alright? It was at 5 o'clock, it closed down, there was nobody on Main Street, there was nothing going on. Now you're starting to build a vibrant downtown, alright? With beautiful buildings, people moving into our town. Yes, who said can't afford it? I can't afford it either. If I were to sell my house tomorrow, I couldn't afford to live in one of those apartments because it's more than my mortgage was. Alright? And somebody asked me that once, I said, I can't afford, they said, I can't afford the apartments. I said, neither can I, but they're not forgiving me at this time. But we do have plans, the question was asked, what are we doing to make it affordable? Well, all these new overlay zones that are created, alright? All have a 10% mandatory affordable housing requirement, every single one of them. And these overlay zones will be part of a catalytic effect of rebuilding, there's several, what, three zones? Overlay zones, there are three overlay zones in Hackensack. One goes down kind of River Street, one kind of goes up north along, up by the Fairmount section, where is the other one?
Kind of behind Main Street, if you go west, behind Main Street.
Right, right.
Behind Main Street, you go west in that area.
So our goal is to get those, get those going, get those built. And there'll be some more affordable housing. We've got the 60 units going up over on Monty, and more to follow.
24 units.
24 units on railroad, so. But we are working on that. But the developers are what's paying, everybody says they should be paying for it, they are paying for it. They are paying for it. And these are projects, and again, I hate to keep saying, they were paying very little money in taxes, some of them. They're now paying tremendous amounts of money. The revenue to the city by the time these projects are done, you're looking, I'm guessing between, I can see the CFO sitting there. I'm gonna guess between $10 and $12 million a year of revenue to the city that the city wasn't seeing before. Alright, is that close? Thanks, Tim, close?
Two years away.
Two years away, alright? So that's what's paying for all these, plus the four million a year for the hospital. All this stuff goes to the bottom line, alright? Some goes in surplus, some goes to the bottom line. But this is what pays for all the things, you see all these giant bonds and everything else that are going on? This is what pays for it. So that's the answer to the question. As far as the multiple programs for kids, my kids came through the school system, there were definitely more programs when my kids were in school back in that day. The library has awesome programs for kids. Awesome, so I would check out the library. Doesn't mean the city's not gonna get, well, the city is funds the library, that's part of the city. But if you have any ideas of programs for children that the city might be able to help with, come forward to us. It doesn't have to be sports related, recreation isn't just sports. Recreation covers all different types of things, okay? I apologize, I think it was Donna West. I apologize for missing the e-reads to me, I usually get to that, but my work schedule's been crazy at work. I've been getting like buried at work. Usually I always go to that, I'll try to make the next one in the fall, I promise. Carver Park, you know, we've done a lot of Carver Park in the last few years. We put a new splash pad, put branded bathrooms in, branded tennis courts in, and now we're building three more basketball courts. The only thing left in Carver Park is gonna be, could be landscaping, and maybe some of the playground, is it playground?
Pickleball.
Pickleball's going in on the tennis courts. We're gonna put pickleball inside the tennis courts, so you have a choice of way. But yeah, we've been doing a lot of Carver, all the parks are getting worked on. All the parks are getting worked on. The part that really has only gotten splash pad is Polified Road, it's, you know, Second Wood Park. And that's all they've had. Columbus has had work done, obviously, you've heard about Stipe Park, but-
Is there Phase Two at Columbus, too?
There's a Phase Two, so. And if there's anything else that you think you could use in Carver Park? I mean, Carver Park's not one of our larger parks, but it's certainly a well-utilized park. If there's something you think we could squeeze in there, let us know, and we'll see if we can work on it. You know? And with that, I think that's all I have. Oh, hoop pipe. Somebody spoke to hoop pipe. Yes, gosh. So you're right, if they put two inches of asphalt, and the pole remains the same, the hoop's gonna be nine feet. Nine feet, 10 inches instead of 10 feet. So if they can raise the hoop on, you know, they should measure the hoop and then install it that way so it stays the same height. 10 feet?
10 feet.
10 feet, so 10 feet, just gotta make sure that happens. But I know what you were saying, if you just put it up the same way, it would be the wrong height. So with that, I wish everybody gets home safe. I'll see some of you on Saturday, I hope I will be there. And I'll be there early in the morning, like 10:30. I think we're gonna be there early, 10:30? And we'll see you there. Everybody get home safe, motion to close the meeting. We shut it all down, we shut it all down. Motion to close executive session. Let me finish closing the business, please, then you can talk to me, Richard, alright? Motion to close executive session. Roll call.
Counselor Robert Rodenberg, aye. Deputy Mayor Conchino, aye. Counselor David Lea, aye. Counselor Carol, aye.
Aye. Motion to close the council, the whole?
Aye.
Roll call.
Counselor Robert Rodenberg, aye. Deputy Mayor Conchino, aye. Counselor David Lea, aye. Counselor Carol, aye.
Aye. Motion to close the meeting. Only favor.
Aye.